Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the December 11th, 2024 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Thank you.
Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have student, employee, and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the December 11th, 2024 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Valerie, would you please do a roll call? Here.
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 Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She would do it during public, right?
When you're doing your update. Yeah. During -- well, you can do it during -- yeah, sure.
At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium and just please state your first and last name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sari Bernardo. I recently joined the Harrison Educational Foundation Board as a trustee, and I'm really pleased to be here this evening on behalf of HEF to present a check to HCSD in the amount of $25,738.21 as a result of two unanimously approved grant applications. The first grant, for the amount of $2,438.27 requested by Siobhan Sacchio, Marco DiRocco, Rafael Macia, and Derek Fish -- I hope I said everyone's name right -- supports an innovative plan to incorporate TRX Suspension Trainers into LMK's Phys Ed curriculum. The goal is to bridge the gap between middle and high school phys ed by providing students with early exposure to strength training. The TRX Suspension Trainers are incredibly versatile, allowing students of all ability levels to participate meaningfully, build strength, reduce risk of injury, and develop self-confidence. HEF's mission is to support and enhance the educational opportunities for students in the HCSD, focusing on programs and initiatives that foster innovation, creativity, and success. This grant is a perfect example of how we can support Harrison students with access that will help them thrive not just academically but also physically. The second grant, awarded in the amount of $23,300, is based upon a grant application by Louis DeLassandro from earlier this year for a total funding amount of $44,300. This grant will support Harrison High School's tech education program by enhancing the design program through the addition of state-of-the-art modeling equipment, including a vacuum former, tapered milling machine, a sand casting machine, injection molding machine, and a micro CNC machine. So these tools will be used across each of the six design technology program courses and will immediately impact 220 students in grades nine through 12 with valuable hands-on experience and working with a variety of materials. By engaging with these advanced tools and techniques, students will not only improve their technical skills but also enhance their creativity and problem-solving abilities. The exposure to these new techniques will also prepare them for college-level design programs and careers in the design and engineering industries. HEF is proud to support both of these programs, which will have a lasting impact on our students' educational journeys. We thank the applicants for their vision and dedication, and we're excited to see how these grants will foster innovation and creativity across the district. For more information on HEF or if you'd like to contribute, please visit harrisoned.org, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Dr. Ladwig, other duties aside, we're going to take a picture for our website. And we have some very happy teachers tonight. Mr. DeLassandro is somewhere dancing around his room. He's such a nice man.
Thanks.
He's a farmer. He runs a working farm.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We are forever grateful for HEF and all the hard work behind the scenes, so thank you all and to your entire board.
It's great. Those are great grants.
Yes. I just went slightly out of order, so we have one set of minutes from the November 20th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to some good news that we all need in my president's update. Brooke Shiano reached -- she's part of the National Speech and Debate Association. She reached the premier distinction, which is the highest degree in the National Speech and Debate Association Honor Society, and fewer than 3% of NSDA members earn premier distinction prior to graduation, so we are giving her wonderful, I mean, major kudos for this accomplishment. Yes, so congratulations to Brooke. We are very proud to hear the exciting news. More on debate. Congratulations to the debate team on winning both the varsity and novice divisions at Princeton University's national championship this past weekend, December 6th through 8th. And out of 85 varsity debaters and 54 novices from around the country, Jack Borman was the varsity champion, Alicia Zahenny was the novice champion, Brooke Shiano placed third, and Reese Pottash placed fifth, Flynn Williams placed ninth. So the team has now won eight tournaments so far this season. They are on fire, as always. And then just one more note of distinction with the National Speech and Debate Association members that earned recognition through points and degrees in the NSDA Honor Society. Thanks to dedicated coaching, each new degree represents students' hours of learning, practice, and improvement, and the following degrees were earned at the high school from the month of November 1st through the 30th. Andrew Gaffin premier distinction, Akhtar Gandhi special distinction, and Flynn Williams superior distinction. So congrats to all of our debaters. We have so many young exceptional debaters on this team. It's very impressive. On a similar note, our Model Congress attended Yale, the Yale Conference's past weekend, and Samantha Reben won best delegate, so congratulations. The Teachers Association had an Italian -- sorry, the Italian Teachers Association had a poetry contest, and it took place at NYU's Casa Italiano in Manhattan. Four Harrison High School students won medals for poetry. The students chosen an Italian poem to memorize and recite for a panel of judges and a live audience at NYU Center for Italian Studies. And the contestants, they're judged on pronunciation, length, difficulty of poem, theatrics, and intonation. So for the 10th grade level, Laura Nowak received the first-place gold medal. Kango Kozira received the third-place bronze medal. And for the 9th grade, Nora Papushaj won the second-place silver medal, and over to Nowak won the third-place bronze medal. So congrats to our young Italian poetry students. The National STEM Festival finalist, this is super-duper impressive. Our junior Chase Endy was named a finalist at the National STEM Festival, which is a nationwide STEM competition for high school students who show exceptional talent in STEM. And Chase was selected for more than 2,500 applicants nationwide, and he now advances to the next level for the national STEM champion. And we are majorly rooting you on and can't wait to hear how you succeed. I did miss the -- okay. Oh, this is the -- I really enjoyed reading about this. So members of the Harrison Central School District's leadership team, they were sharing work with colleagues across the state. So in November, Kelly Machewski, who is our Director of Guidance, and Cherry Hine, who is one of our high school guidance counselors, presented a session titled "Family Engagement", which is strategies for student wellness and success, at the New York State School Counselors' Association Annual Conference in Albany. And then as part of the NISMA conference presenters, Matt Royal, who is the Director of Fine and Performing Arts, and Charlie Bennett, who is orchestra, will present at the New York State School NISMA Conference. From critical to candid, transforming feedback through proven frameworks, Matt Royal and The Method Before The Method book, Charles Bennett. In regards to the NISMA conference, our student, Mary Grace Crozier, who is a high school student, has been accepted to sing in the NISMA All-State Chorus next month, so I hope that is a joyful experience. I expect it to be, and I hope -- Mary, you have a wonderful time. The Harrison High School thespians in Hudson Valley One Act Competition, so two of our students will perform at the Hudson Valley One Act Competition sponsored by the Educational Theater Association. Congratulations to Nina Haberly and our Harrison High School theater students. Moving on to athletics, our varsity soccer team, the girls' varsity soccer team, Ingrid Murphy, big congratulations to Ingrid Murphy. She was named the class AA Third Team All-State Honors for Soccer. Our boys' varsity basketball team defeated Ardeley 67-40, so they're off to a great start. The boys' swim team defeated Ry 97-76 in the Wappinger 75-62. And we had Sophia Bondikov last week signed her commitment letter to swim at Binghamton University. It was a wonderful signing, and she now apparently in the pool and up on the plaques. I forget the student's name.
I've forgotten the --
Yeah, I forget the name, but Mr. Dearstein was giving a cute little just story about the person. Evers? Evers?
Evers, 1983, right?
Yeah, so anyway, long story short, Sophia Bondikov has now broken every single one of the records, plaques on our -- on the wall, so she will now be replacing.
She basically is the board.
She's now the board, and we'll see if anyone can compete against her numbers because it has been many years since anyone has even come close.
And quite an impressive student and human being, so terrific.
So she is off to Binghamton.
She's a bear.
The Titans, so our hockey team, the Titans defeated Cortland 9-1. Julian Gar had a hat trick, and they also defeated Mount Pleasant 8-6 in the Guy Matthews Thanksgiving Invitational Championship. Jack Mazzella had a hat trick. Isaac Schultz earned his 100th career point. The boys' bowling team defeated White Plains 7-0. Kiara Yamada has a high-score game of 203, and the boys defeated Portchester and Yonkers. Joseph Taffea 190, and Dylan McCarran 245 had high games. The girls' bowling team earned wins versus Portchester and Yonkers. And our wrestling just had the second annual Vindeceda Jewel Tournament at the high school week. Is it coming up on Saturday or it just happened?
I don't know.
I think it's coming up.
If there haven't been results, I think I would --
I have a feeling it's this weekend.
It's this Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw them practicing today, so it's probably this Saturday, and it's named for our Hall of Fame, Westchester County Hall of Fame Wrestling Coach, Vindeceda.
The winter concerts are well underway. A few of the elementary schools had their concert, the winter concerts, and last night was the high school dance performance. And just keep an eye on the district. There's so much exciting things happening that parents are welcome and encouraged to attend. It will continue into January here at LMK for the sixth, seventh, and eighth winter concerts.
I think people are taking that advice quite seriously because Dr. Mohol, Dr. Ladwig, and I were at all of those concerts, and the elementary concerts were jam-packed. And Andy was there as well. We had not a place to sit. Mr. Blaustein was at Parsons last night. Just a wonderful, wonderful event. And Harrison Avenue, the size of our orchestras are just incredible in all of our schools, so the programs are thriving and people are taking your advice and they're checking their kind of showing up.
And as they should. What else? We -- the elementary schools all have a half-day Thursday and Friday of this week for parent-teacher conferences. And I think that concludes my update. Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to you, Dr. Wolf.
All righty, thank you. Hello, everybody. Lots of good things to talk about, but let's start with what has been a very challenging 48 hours in the Harrison Central School District. You received a letter from me yesterday where I outlined something that occurred in the middle school that is very, very troubling to us. It is also a credit to what an extraordinary faculty and staff and systems are in place here to protect our children. And I'm looking at my colleague, Dr. Ladwig, who does such a magnificent job of supervising the nurses and was instrumental in making sure that the oversight systems necessary to uncover these kinds of things were in place. But as you know, there was an employee sadly who took medication from a locked closet, and that individual is now not with us. He's on a leave at this point. But I just want to call to your attention two things that I think are critically important. The first is, our primary responsibility is always the safety of your children. And in many ways, this tested our system, and the news is very good in that the system worked, and we were very quickly able to identify a potential problem and rectify it. And that's a credit to our employees. It's also a credit to the kinds of partnerships that we have. I see the Harrison Police Department represented here tonight. They could not be a more supportive, thoughtful, helpful partner in these very difficult circumstances. The amount of integrity and care that they bring makes the outcome so much more profoundly positive for children and for our faculty and staff and for parents, who are all impacted by this. The other side of this story, though, is, you know, I've gotten calls from newspapers about what's going on here, and I think our letter was pretty explicit. This is a very sad thing that occurred. It is not salacious, and this is a school district that predicates itself on caring for human beings with compassion and empathy and humanity. That's what characterizes who we are. That's the way we would treat anyone in these circumstances. And so I can't thank the parents or the students, and in particular, the faculty and staff of this school, for the overwhelming support they have shown to one another and for individuals who need support in challenging times. So, you know, sometimes these kinds of things truly reveal the values that a district holds, that its community holds. And if there is a moment of pride in all of this darkness, it is that. There were many ways we could have chosen to behave, but the way we chose to behave was with care for all concerned and understanding that there are 750 employees in this district. None of them and none of you are immune from all of the challenges that face us every day, and sometimes those challenges creep in and affect our employees. And that's what happened here. Primary responsibility was met: care for your children. Secondary responsibility is be humane, be fair, be ethical, and you elevate everybody in the moment. And so I'm proud of you, and I'm grateful for all that parents, faculty, staff have done, and particularly this Board of Education, who always, always consistently lives the values of this organization. So it is the holiday season. I was very excited to share our gratefulness with our PT Council, who do such extraordinary work. Tonight, you saw our Education Foundation, who do such extraordinary work. The Harrison Police Department, who do such extraordinary work. We should all be so incredibly grateful for the care and love that we show to one another and always to the benefit of the children that go to school here. So that's my message to you tonight about this very challenging and sad event here in our school district. On a happier note later tonight, you will be receiving an email, if you're a parent at the middle school, from Mr. Freed. The Board will authorize us to appoint Mr. Gonzalez as the acting middle school principal here to support Mr. Freed and Ms. Pola and the kids. And if you know Danny, he is a shining light in our district. He will continue his role as Assistant Athletic Director, but he'll be supporting kids and the day-to-day operations here at the school, and we're grateful for Danny for stepping up to do that, and we'll act upon that later. So I wanted to go over just a few other things that are sort of business. This is an interesting time of year. I just met with my cabinet, and I will remind you of what I remind them. The holiday season is a wonderful time for most people. It's also a time of extraordinary stress for some people. Some people are lonely, some kids feel overlooked. It's important for us now as an organization but also as a community to look left and look right and see who needs your help, especially at this time of year. Everything is always amplified in these moments, and so we are always reminding ourselves that this is the time when we need to show greater attention and greater care and concern. So that is our holiday message to you as well. The Board has been very active on the advocacy front because part of our work as a school board and superintendents is to make sure that we're constantly pushing forward policies that make sense for public school but also for our school. We are very concerned about the foundation aid proposals. I will be attending a meeting tomorrow and be sharing my concerns with the Commissioner of Education. I've also set up a separate meeting with the state Senator Shelley Mayer, who is the Chair of the Education Committee, and will be bringing together the Executive Board of the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents. That's an organization of 82 superintendents. And the lower -- and the Soundshore Superintendents, which is another seven. We'll be meeting here because we want to make sure that we are being fully focused on making sure that no policies are passed that in any way bring harm to our ability to provide an adequate education for the kids in Harrison but also for the kids across New York State. This is the time of year when we get to celebrate our kids. As Mrs. Kozak just mentioned, last night was the dance concert. If you haven't seen the high school concerts, we encourage you to do so. They are truly extraordinary. I think we're being distracted by a leak. Okay. I need a Mary Poppins umbrella, and I know that the casting has been done for Mary Poppins. Maybe we could get her to fly in and give me a little help. Okay, so while I have this wildly distracted school board --
We're here.
-- I'm going to close by saying, the holiday season is upon us. Remember that our purpose here in Harrison High School is, in Harrison Central School District, to see and recognize all of the people around us. Our mission is all means all. That means we value each other, so let's remember that at this time of year. Let's have a board meeting. I'm going to get Dr. Ladwig an umbrella.
He's doing an excellent job. He wears many hats.
He needs a hat tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, moving on to the personnel report. I will take on consent unless anyone objects.
Nope.
Seeing none. A, certificate of personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Four, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Five, change of status. Six, leave of absence without pay. One, resignation. Two --
Non-certificated personnel.
B, non-certificated personnel, thank you, Kelly. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance submitted. Five, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Six, leave of absence. Seven, change of status. C, other. One, student/teacher, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the administrative report. I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School Model Congress field trip to Boston, Massachusetts for the Harvard Model Congress. B, approval of Harrison High School DACA Club field trip to Rochester, New York for the New York State DACA competition. C, approval of Harrison High School Model Congress field trip to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for the Penn Model Congress. D, acceptance of Harrison Educational Foundation grant, Harrison High School Technology Education Program. E, acceptance of Harrison Educational Foundation grant, TRX Suspension, Trainers and PE. F, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ab School PTA. G, authorization to show up Harilson May, LLP, to serve as special counsel to render services for the Harrison Central School District. H, first reading of revised policies, the following policies from the 1,000 Series bylaws, including 1,100 Statement of Educational Philosophy and Core Values. 1110, School District and Board of Education Legal Status and Authority. 1120, Board of Education Qualifications, Numbers, and Terms of Service. 1210, Board of Education Members, Nomination and Election. 1220, Reporting of Expenditures and Contributions. 1230, Resignation and Dismissal. 1310, Powers and Duties of the Board. 1320, Nomination and Election of Board Officers and Duties of the President and Vice President. And 1330, Appointments and Designations by the Board of Education. I, approval of CSE/CPSE minutes. J, approval of CSE/CPSE recommendations. K, approval of SLIDE Letter Agreement with Harrison Administrators Association. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to say thank you to the Harrison Education Foundation for the TRX Suspension Trainers and PE, as well as the Harrison High School Technology Education Program Grants, as well as a big thank you to the generous donation from the Harrison Ab School PTA. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the Finance and Facilities Report. I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, Contract for Educational Services, Deveraux Foundation, DBA Deveraux Behavioral Health. B, Contract for Educational Services, Irvington, UFSD. C, Authorization to Purchase Technology Products and Services from CDW-G. D, 2024-25 Appropriation Transfers. E, Contract Award RFB Number 24/25-13, Bleacher and Scoreboard Removal. F, Treasurer's Report, November 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will take place on January 8th, 2025. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. I'm wishing everyone a joyous holiday season and a healthy and happy new year. Good night. Oh.
Well, we got to do that on camera.
Okay.
Let's start that over.
Don't tell me I have to read the end.
No, just the end. Just say the --
Okay. So let me just start that. Yeah, do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night. Happy holidays. Have a wonderful night, happy holidays.